Study session on the budget for February 6th. If we could start with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you to all the department heads and deputies that are here today. Do we have any public comment? Go ahead and close the public comment. And then we'll go ahead and first, we're going to start with Jason's presentation of the budget. And then all the departments are here represented. So if you want to go into a deeper dive of a particular department or questions, they are all here, ready to go. And then I just want to point out, thank you to this board because you've helped us get through not only a pandemic, but a situation of bringing back services, creating stability through this capital fund that we have. And we are stronger than ever right now with our position for the future. And I want to thank it is from the vision of the seven up here as well as all the department heads in the community. So I just want to thank everybody for everything you've done. But thank you. Jason?
Thanks. A quick outline, we're going to first spend some time on where the current year is going to end. And then I'm going to ask for some guidance on some decisions going forward there. And then we'll jump into the budget for next year. Seems like a lot of items to cover for next year, but some of those will go pretty quickly. So three main operating funds, general road and public safety. We combine those and kind of call them our three main operating funds because they're so tightly intertwined because of the general fund, inter-fund transfers of support to road and public safety. So the current year, we're looking at revenues exceeding expenditures by about $5 million, primarily two and a half from outperformance on investment earnings. The market was great in 2023, and that continues. A million, about a million from vacant positions, mostly in public safety throughout the year, which also lends partly to the healthcare benefit savings with those positions that were vacant, along with just another good claim year. And then 200,000 from various other areas that aren't really mentionable. I thought it was interesting, looking back over the last 12-month period, there's been a lot of activity in personnel, 33 full-time hires in that 12-month period, 12 retirements, 16 other separations, and there's still remains. I think this is already outdated in the last couple of weeks since I did this slide, but 12 vacancies, I think that that might have grown a little bit. And then update on ARPA, I think my estimate for the 33124 year is that we'll be actually spending a little over a half a million dollars of our funds in this year. So I say surplus caution because usually the gut reaction, oh, we got $5 million, woo-hoo. Just a reminder, we have $120 million of unfunded legacy costs. So those are on closed plans. So this isn't due to the hirings that have occurred. This is an established number that's going to fluctuate each year based on actuarial results and can vary very greatly just by market. So if you remember 2022 calendar, market was not very good. We took big losses. 2023, it turned around. And so you're going to have those ups and downs that can have a very big effect on that $120 million liability. We have 21 million of identified capital costs. So that's just things we know about, working with the department heads for the next five years budget. So that's including the one coming up, '25, '26, '27, '28, and '29. We still have unknown future costs of stormwater monitoring and maintenance. We have unknown results of space needs analysis for public safety. And I know that was expanded to some other areas, but the main focus was public safety. Again, the market is cyclical. We will, we had a great run. Not to be pessimistic, but every time I get a chance, I'll remind you that there is another recession coming. It's just you look at, we had that investment study session. Every time you see the market does this. So it's going to happen. And so my next point is, let's not forget 2008 to 2020. I was thinking earlier, but I think about only half of the department head management group we have today was here during that time. And only one board member, trustee Barnett, went through that. So I think it's important to think back because, again, we're going to have another one of those cyclical markets that I would like to be better prepared for. So some of my next slides will get into some of that. And then I thought it was worth mentioning, Michigan is ranked as being only one of four states that has the most restrictive property tax laws. So the other 46 states use one method of limiting property tax growth for local governments. Michigan utilizes all three that are out there. Rate limits, like saying that a township can only have 10 mills. Assessment limits like Headley. And then the other limit that came through taxable value on proposal A. So again, when that recession hits or something similar, Michigan will feel it worse than most of the other nation, like the last time we saw it. And crediting agencies, I'm sure nobody wants to be on the board when, if, when somebody decides to lower that credit rating. So they love to see us paying down our liabilities. Those are a big, big topic every time we meet with them. And they love seeing fund balance and other ways to put away your funds for a rainy day. So surplus option one, it's always my number one, the DB pension plan. I'd like to, we could put additional contribution payment towards what is owed. So that's in addition to what we already did recently when I came to the board. The only difference is that would be expensed in the current fiscal year, but the, because the plan is a calendar year, it would count towards our '24 calendar year. So it'd be delayed another year from the other additional contribution we did. Every bit of extra helps, again, with the market. So pay it while we have it. And I like putting the extra here because it has an effect on all future budget years as soon as it's counted in the actuarial report. So this is a chart straight from the 2022 actuarial report. You can ignore the dashed lines that are kind of arcing upwards. Those are scenarios if we, like, the brownish one is actual contribution if we only paid 80% of our ADC. That's not going to happen because in the state of Michigan, we, by law, we have to pay 100% of it. But this, these green bar that are going down, this is, in 2022, this is where they projected our required payments. So we were at the peak, and it was going to start coming down every year going forward. That was 1-1 of '22. A year later, 1-1 of '23, after we had that bad market, you can see, oh, never mind, we're going up. And then for a few more years, and then we'll start to taper back down. So just from that one year, that's really the only thing that occurred. It had a pretty decent effect on what we have to pay out of future budgets. So I worked with our contact at Milliman and said, what about factoring in the extra we did in '23? So that's this seven and a half, this first seven and a half million. And what if next year, we have another 2 million extra? How does that affect, assuming everything else stays constant, which is a big if and will never happen, but everything else stays constant, all these assumptions, what would happen to those ADCs? So these green ones are the same as the green bar chart you saw on the previous slide. And then here's actual, proposed, and then each one of these year, future years gets a little piece of that going forward. Another big item is down here, this does not include, because this was an actuarial from 12 months ago, this does not include the positive market results we had throughout calendar '23. So once that's factored in, I see each one of these blue bars going down further. Option two is equipment and replacement fund, transfer excess funds into there. At March '23, there was 9,825,000 built up. Again, we have 21 million of capital that we know about over the next five years. It also releases pressure on future years. So that last note, for example, if in a few, say in 2028, we have 3 million in capital costs, the board could decide, take, withdraw 3 million from the equipment and replacement fund, which then frees up that 3 million that, for example, if that was in public safety, you now have that $3 million available in public safety to pay the other types of costs without having to make significant cuts or attrition and things like that when you're faced with those decisions. Option three is contribute to the retiree healthcare, OPEB trust. Again, it's a liability we owe. There is a plan in place and a corrective action plan with the state. If you did that, it would be expensed in '23, '24, and the plan year follows the fiscal. So there'd be no difference in timing. And February of each year is when we do our normal contribution. So we would add to that if that was something the board wanted to do. I crossed off the other bullet point because, just to note that this option does not have the same effect on future years as the previous two options. It's not lowering any liability because we're not, or I should say, it's not lowering any ADC because with the OPEB plan, there is no ADC. You're not required by state law, but we do have to follow our corrective action plan minimum of making that contribution. And then I guess another benefit is we just get to that 40% minimum sooner than if you don't, if you just stay on track of normal. And then option four, really isn't an option, it's really the default. So you do nothing. That $5 million rolls into fund balance. We do have a fund balance policy for the general fund. So we wouldn't be able to let it all close into general fund. That would put it at 84%. So we would have to spread that out and let some go to road funds, some to public safety, and the rest to general. So my recommendation would be to contribute 2 million to the DB pension plan liability. Libraries portion of that, that they would reimburse us is 78,000. I'd look for guidance from you on whether that's something you'd be interested in. And then I'd be back Monday next week at the board meeting to request budget amendments to do so. I would also then, with the remaining amount, contribute up to $5 million to the equipment and replacement fund. Again, I'd be back on the 12th to do, get the approval to do so. I know two and five is seven, not five. But in the past, you know, as we're dealing with a lot of assumptions and projections at this point, so I'm giving us some wiggle room so that I don't have to come back again and say, oh, guess what, we, you know, these expenses didn't come in, and we have extra money to wiggle, to put in here. So up to 5 million, but it's going to be somewhere in that, probably three to four. And then leaving any minor remaining amounts would then close the fund balance, but I would max out as much as we could on that equipment fund. So I want to pause there and ask, I guess, for feedback and questions and anything else you want to talk about with 33124 before we move on to '25.
And then some things that weren't suggested too, is if you have ideas that, I know we've kicked around ideas of putting even more into the roads, right, or the roads we wouldn't be able to because they couldn't be used in time.
Correct.
So there was discussion of, could we do the million now, put it in roads first later? That was one that we couldn't do because it has to be expended. But if you do have options and ideas that you want also included that we could finish and get in on this budget year, this is a time also to suggest that. So in addition to the discussion and options that Jason had, if this, if there is anybody on the board that wants to bring up other items too, this is a good time for that. Does anyone want to start?
I just have a question. The $2 million that you're proposing here for the pension plan, that's in addition to the money that we already put extra into the pension plan?
And the amount we already put in will go toward, will be in the late, the most recent actuarial report that will be issued in a few months. If you did another 2 million, that wouldn't get counted in until another year from now.
Anyone else want to add to the discussion?
No, I like the, I like the recommendations that you presented to the board, especially the $2 million for the DB plan because it's, I think it's very important that we fund as much as we can. And additionally, the $5 million to equipment and replacement is certainly important because we have a lot of, a lot of expenses that we've reviewed in the past couple of years. And I know there's going to be many more coming up. So I think both recommendations are very, very prudent.
Is there any interest in the OPEB, in putting anything in there? So would you want just, so again, this is, no offense, this is Jason. He knows OPEB is another one that we're always looking on, so he did include that in there for us. But would you want to go with the suggestion? Or are you looking to do the suggestion plus OPEB or plus anything else?
Suggestion plus OPEB, because I know that's something that we've discussed many times. It's something that the earlier, much earlier supervisors did nothing with until Leo Savoy finally did something with it. And I would like to continue that legacy that he started and continue to add to it because in the long run, it'll get us to the 40%, which is so important.
Yeah. And that takes off some restrictions from us, even when you are talking about negotiations and what we can do. I know, I'm personally thankful that that was starting to be invested in. I understand it won't make as large of an impact as the DB, but there is that impact of when we have it, let's, let's put some in. And as Jason likes to point out, we are putting in more than we normally already allotted for. It's usually 1.275. We did end up putting in one, is it 1.7?
1.75.
Yeah, 1.75. So this would be a suggestion of, again, if, and if the vote is for just the two, but I wasn't sure also, did you want to add anything else?
Yeah, I was going to, when you said, did anybody want to see anything else? I mean, the OPEB has always been a kind of a critical thing that we do need to keep our eye on and fund. So rather than, I like the 2 million to the DB pension.
Yeah.
I thought that was a really good idea. But maybe instead of saying the 5 million, maybe we could put, you know, another million or I, I'm not, I'm not going to make Jason's suggestions, but another piece of that, instead of all of it going to equipment and replacement?
Right.
I guess I'd like to see some, some additional to OPEB personally. Otherwise, I agree, that's exactly what.
Well, I'm just curious, Director Tice, if we do say that we want to put some money in OPEB, would your recommendation be to keep 2 million into the DB pension plan and take it out of the?
Equipment, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to echo what everybody said. Obviously, the liabilities are important. We know that we have to pay them. We don't know what the future holds. So I think it makes the most sense to put as much as we can into those liabilities.
So I'm going to differ from somebody else here. While I appreciate putting extra money in the OPEB, like you said, it doesn't actually reduce our ADC in future years. So to me, when we have lean years and we don't have a choice, if I'm going to put money someplace, I want to be able to put it to where I have a lower requirement in future years because we don't know what's going to happen. So even though we already are on a plan with the state in order to, we have to put that minimum in, we've been continuing to contribute more, which is good, I'd rather find ways to reduce the ADC, that actuary minimum that we have to do for future boards in years. So while I want to get as quickly as we can to that 40%, when I'm looking at being the most prudent with those dollars, I want to pay some of those other liabilities down quicker to reduce that. I think we get more bang for our buck that way.
So are you thinking maybe 3 million then, since we're all kind of on board with the two?
I would do.
Are you thinking 3 million?
3 million to the DB and then 4 million to the equipment and replacement fund would be my recommendation.
I'd be happy to mention what I think. I mean, I think Jason nailed it. I have exactly what you suggested, Jason. My mind, the biggest factor is flexibility, short-term flexibility, which both of those things do. No doubt, paying down our legacy costs is critical, but the OPEB is really much more defined. And if we pay it that little sooner, we do, you know, get to the 40% sooner, but we're still looking a long-term, you know, a long, many years out, a decade plus, I can't remember how much sooner we might say, you know, get to the 40%. But if we put it in those two funds that, you know, Jason has suggested, it, you know, works on both the unfunded, you know, unfunded liabilities, it's been defined by the state requirements, and also retains as much flexibility in the near term that we could possibly get. So I think the recommendation is a solid one. I would go with that.
Sure. You know, I actually totally agree with Martin. I think that, you know, Jason's point about forthcoming recessions, whether or not he's as good a prognosticator as Punxsutawney Phil, it remains to be seen, but I agree with the premise that it's going to happen. And these two options, the pension plan and the equipment fund, give us, you know, optionality and flexibility in the next few years. So I agree with Jason's recommendations as presented. And while, you know, I don't think that we're not being mindful of OPEB, we're still putting in, you know, almost $2 million every year, a million and a half to $2 million. And we could talk about, you know, if there's room with the '25 budget that we're going to be talking about later, whether there's time to put, you know, some additional contributions there. But I think in terms of the flexibility and the optionality that it gives us, I like these recommendations.
And so far, we've got three different recommendations going to, but I will echo that, although yes, I agree with the 2 million, I do feel comfortable with our equipment and replacement fund, that I personally wouldn't, I would like to see a million going towards OPEB, meaning because I know that being the one that talks to the unions, that is, that is, there are certain restrictions that are put on us on what we can work in and give based on those kind of costs. So just, that is something that got mentioned again today in a group meeting, that if we could get out from under that, it's not just, you're correct, it'll take a little while. We're getting there faster than we were supposed to, so that's great. But getting out of that anytime we can, like you said, it was a legacy that somebody started and.
In addition to that, in the long run, if we continue to try and minimize, do whatever we can, it helps our credit rating.
Yes.
And that's an issue that has been presented to the township. They're concerned about that. And whatever we can do to take the balance down, get us closer to the 40%, I think in the long run, helps us as far as showing Moody's and the others that were working hard to get, to do whatever we can do as a management team to get our work on that credit rating, make sure we maintain the AAA.
And you are right that Moody's mentioned that.
Yeah.
They count, I don't know if everybody knows, but the SAD debts count against us in their formula. So their answer was stop offering SADs, which we all agreed wasn't what we were going to be doing. So I think that's why I also am, yeah, mindful of the ones we do have control of and are under that. But that's just a.
Yeah, I mean, I have to take exception with that because we're $20 million away from getting to the 40%. So throwing an extra million is just a drop in a bucket. And if we can put that money into the equipment and replacement fund, that's dollar-for-dollar savings that we're going to see in our budgets over the next few years, you know? I did, I asked Jason for the schedule of equipment, you know, and like he said, there's $21 million over the next five years worth of capital requirements that we have. And any dollar that we put away today towards that is a dollar that we have freed up in the budget in the coming years to do whatever we want to with at that point. We can put it into OPEB at that point, we can put it into pension, we could, you know, do whatever we need to do. And so I, I think that flexibility is something that we don't want to discard.
One thing though, if we're not likely to do it now, I don't know how likely someone is in the future to do it. So when you say, we don't do it now because we might be able to do it later, it does sound a little reminiscent of what I feel like they might have been saying back then. And that's what scares me is they didn't, when they had it, they weren't putting it towards it because they weren't thinking long-term. I think the one fear is we do have a thing going where we're trying to put in, and I agree, you're right, every little bit will help in the capital. I just, I don't want to stop that momentum. When we have extra, putting it in those liabilities is important. You're right, it won't come off 20 million right away, but if we put an extra million in every year, it'll go a lot faster than if we don't. But, so we have three different suggestions on the board right now that I might have caught. It was Jason's. We do have some that are up for the two and the five. We had one that suggested the three and five. And then there's the 2-4-1. So who wants to start some discussion on that?
I'm all for the 2-4-1 for what I just discussed already. I think in the long run, getting those liabilities down as best we can is in our, is in the township's interests.
I am for 1 also. Okay.
Can I make a suggestion? Just maybe a middle ground between them is, the minimum on the OPEB is 1.25. We budgeted and are making 1.75 this year, so we're already getting 500,000. So what about just another, an additional 500,000?
So that's a million extra.
Out of the equipment. So you ended up with a million extra.
Yeah.
But really, we had already planned half of it.
Sounds a good idea. I could go, go with that.
What do you guys think?
And then are we going to keep the other half million still in the equipment fund? Or you guys want to put it into the pension fund?
I guess I'd keep an equipment fund. It just gives us more flexibility. We can't bring it on and spend on anything, but it replaces other funds, which gives it the flexibility.
Yeah, I like the recommendation of putting the additional 500,000 and keeping the pension at 2 million.
Okay.
Michael?
You know, my opinion is like what I said, I think I'd put the money into the pension and to the equipment fund. But, you know, if I'm the last one standing, then obviously whatever everyone else wants is, is fine.
Does someone want to make a go at a motion?
Well, we wouldn't do that today.
Oh.
I'll come back, I'll be back.
Are you going to come back?
Yeah, I just needed some idea of what to bring, what to come back with.
So you can come back with the actual?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you feel like you have the guidance you need?
Yeah.
All right.
Philosophically, I certainly agree with the point. We're in alignment on that, but I think you made a good suggestion to get us all in one spot together, so.
Okay.
All right. Ready?
Thank you. Part two. '25, we have balanced general road and public safety with about $1.6 million left to allocate. Taxable value is reaching 5.1 billion, equating to 6.5% net increase to tax revenues. And a second year assessing director still saying no Headley rollback this year. And assessing still entering new construction. So there is a possibility, he didn't want me to say anything, but there is a possibility that we're going to have even more revenue than, than what's being presented here. So between now and then, now and the March approval meeting, I'll make that adjustment if necessary.
Can you guarantee it for us? Can you guarantee it for us? We'd like it.
Expecting similar amount of state revenue sharing, 5.1 million. We are budgeting in decrease to investment earnings compared to the current year, which has got to be one of the highest we've had. But it's still much higher than recent years, just being conservative. And they are saying the Fed will cut rates probably in the next quarter or two. The, we're no longer charging rent to the. The, we're no longer charging rent to some of the departments, enterprise departments to the general fund. We're going to let that be run through the central services calculation. And then we'll discuss this more in depth in a later slide, but franchise fees, most of those will now go to the cable fund, kind of a flip-flop from more recent years. 2.75% wage increases. We recently had our healthcare renewal with Cigna and our consultants. And just a note to shout out to HR and benefits administrator and our consultants worked hard to get those illustrative rates low and the fees. And they also were able to negotiate where we get now 100% share of the rebates, prescription rebates that Cigna gets. There was a time many, a few years ago where we got zero. And then I think it went to maybe 60 or 70%. And then this most recent year was 90. Now they got us to 100%. DB pension ADC payments, net of the libraries portion. So just what you would find in our budgets is just over $5.3 million. And then we have right now budgeted the minimum OPEB contribution of 1.25. And another note that we got our recent, most recent in October 2023 from the municipal stability board that we are in substantial compliance with the Act and the corrective action plan. If you recall, the new waste contract included two waste events to be held throughout the year as part of the cost, no extra cost to budgets. But because there was room, we added in, back in a third waste event, which many years ago we had three held in a year. So that would be planned to be held in March of '25, in addition to the other two. In the fall, we talked about increasing paving contractors up to 750,000. And with the room we had, after going through the budget again in the last couple of months, there's been an additional million added into that. So the public works director says they have plenty of projects and can easily go through that money in that period. And then we talked a little bit last time about the vehicles. We got a ton of them in. We had about three years' worth all come in in one budget year. So a lot of those that were in the fall budget have already been delivered and so decreased those expenses. In addition to the 545,000 we estimate of ARPA to be spent by March '24, we have an additional 380 estimated at this time for the following 12 months. And those are, those are only on projects that are either already in place or approved, or we have a pretty decent idea of what they're going to cost. There's still plenty room for others. And we have a slide later on that. Four full-time positions brought back, one road operator and then three firefighter EMS personnel. And then we're looking at bringing back not full-time, but a part-time receptionist at the front desk area where they used to be about 20 hours a week, help with phone calls and people walking in. Some of the large projects in capital I have on the next couple of slides. We continue to have some stormwater costs that are pretty costly. Building expenses like boilers and RTUs, which are rooftop units, servers, another hot hatch for the road. And then there's always a lot of equipment with public safety as well as you have four different fire stations to maintain. So there's some items here, office furniture. For police, there's the Truenarc handheld narcotics analyzer that was in the current year budget, but got delayed so that we're moving that over to next year. And we have some big vehicles coming, rescue truck and the Command One vehicle. The brick station lording system has been in previous years and then was later removed. So that one's finally back and should, should get done this year.
Wait before you go on to the next, does anyone have question? I know we're going to do questions at the end, but with these that are up there right now. When Jason's done with his presentation, we have all of, everybody here as well. Some of these may not be terms or items that everyone's familiar with, so you can always ask us to refer back to this and we can get the gentleman up here to explain them. Thank you.
So surplus for next year, 1.6. That's already gone down in the last week. I've gotten some, a handful of items already of changes across various departments. But I would recommend at this stage, budgeting that surplus just as a transfer to the Equipment and Replacement Fund, knowing that that transfer doesn't happen until the very end of the fiscal year. So, you know, 14, 13, 14 months from now. So a few times that I'm back before you and I give updates, you can easily, that won't be spent yet at those times, those meetings. So you could easily decide to reallocate that rather than locking it into something at this stage would be my recommendation. But I'm open, of course, to discussion on that. Actually, I guess I'll pause here and see if there's any thoughts on that before we move forward.
Someone want to join in?
So we talked about our investment policy for our fund balance. We want to keep everybody between 15 and 70%. Are all of our various departments in that range currently?
It's just a general, the general fund is the only fund balance policy we have.
Okay.
So the other ones have no limits or restrictions, but they don't grow as much as what the general fund does. And we can control that one because it has the inter-fund transfers with public safety and road. So actually, when that gets to a point where the board decides it is where it is, then we can start any excess. We would just give more to road and more to public safety because I'd like to see those grow a little bit more than where they're at today.
Okay.
Anyone else have any comments for Jason?
ARPA update. You've seen that definition of obligation before. Just a reminder, we received the 4.4 million you've seen. We've obligated just over 2.4 to date. Estimated to be obligated soon, 300,000. And that's projects that are out in early stages, like the compensation study that the board has already approved, ARPA funds for the strategic plan. It was already coming for the board. I think there's some money in there for the clerks projects with the document management. And then we have 11 months left to obligate approximately another $1.7 million. Or if it gets to a point where that seems to be becoming a real issue, you can apply it just to our governmental services, not necessarily something new that we're purchasing or paying somebody for a service for. And then 35 months left to have it 100% spent out the door, all the cash gone. An update on the senior services fund. This is the tax bills that are out right now are the first year collecting the increased and renewed millage. They plan to spend, they rewarded $150,000 from the county. I think last year, maybe even the year before. Just waiting to figure out what to spend it on. So that'll be spent in the coming fiscal year on replacing probably most of their fitness equipment. They're also looking at purchasing a 10-passenger bus for $90,000 through SMART. And SMART will be giving us the revenue that offsets that purchase. They are looking to bring back in the second half of the year a reduced version of the adult day services program. And then we have budgeted, included an engineering study on the parking lot replacement. That's been a topic, I think, before you a couple of times. So we're estimating $50,000. And the purpose of that would be to provide something that gives us an idea of what the actual cost of that project would be to replace it. Because we've heard numbers over the years anywhere from 400,000 to a million. And with the updated requirements on drainage and the standards, it's probably just getting bigger as we delay it. So by the way, is an option going forward too, once we have that number of possible ARPA project. And then they have $60,000 budgeted for the pool filtration and chemical system.
Question on the plan to bring back reduced version of adult daycare services program in the second half of the year. Do you know what the plan is, how reduced and days, hours, anything at this point?
I do not.
But Christine, or sorry, Ruth is here so that at the, at the end of this, we're going to have, Ruth, if you don't mind, when we get to questions, maybe coming up and giving some information on that. Perfect.
Building inspection fund, permit activity still, still doing really well. So we're not seeing any signs of that slowing. So we're budgeting similar revenue as the current year. They are, we did include some money to hire a company as backup for inspections for when the inspectors are not available. And then there were vehicle purchases, but those were part of the ones that were delivered. So no vehicles now for them in that budget year. Opioid settlement fund. Just, just want to bring it up to keep it on top of your mind that we are, we are receiving money, we're accounting for it. It's in its own separate fund. We've received approximately 100 grand so far. At this point, we're at the stage of just accumulating. Nothing's been spent. There's still, I hope still going to be some more guidance that comes out and maybe through the departments, they can see how other municipalities are spending it and make sure that we follow all the recommended requirements. And going forward, open to hearing options from department heads and board on what you think that could be spent on. So at the stage right now, we're accounting for it, but I've got nothing in the budget to be slated to be spent over the next 12-month period. And the timing of the payments coming in, it still has no rhyme or reason to it. We're getting it all different times and different amounts. And you have the different settlement funds and they keep adding new ones. And so the money doesn't expire, doesn't go away. So we're not, there'd be no reason to rush into anything.
Then there, just let people know, the only restriction we were put on is it has to go towards the prevention or education of opioids. So police, fire can use it for Narcan. And also there's another drug out now because the synthetic fentanyl is not affected by Narcan. There's another, it starts with an O, I don't know if the gentleman know the name, but there's another one. So you could include that, you could include youth groups like the BYAs and all that. But then if anyone else has suggestions for that adult group that's affected. So that, that'll be one of the discussions later too, if you have suggestions on all that.
Safety path fund. The TAB grant is back in the budget, so it's a 40% match. So we're going to have revenue of 777. But the total project cost just of that part is over 1.9 million. It's going to be a, with that and with the other construction of the new paths per the plan, it will be a heavy year for construction. If you looked at the packet, hopefully that, that all takes place. And then if it does, that fund balance of that fund will be at a more appropriate level and we, we should see balanced budgets for that fund going forward. Cable fund. So 85% of the franchise fees we have going into the cable fund, leaving 150 in general. There, we continue to follow and the cable directors following the state legislation, state legislation and what's been out there being proposed. There's fear that if these things move forward, that the funding sources are likely to decrease the franchise fees and the PEG fees. The cable fund receives about 451,000 right now annually in PEG fees. And we'll get into that in the next slide. There was a plan in the fall to bring back the full-time studio coordinator that was a filled position that wasn't filled when the person in it had retired. We'll delay that another year. And then the town hall auditorium project has been removed from the ARPA project list. Instead, it will be used, we'll use PEG fees to pay for that. So on the PEG fees, PEG fee revenue is paid to the township by the cable providers. So like AT&amp;T, Comcast. It's based on 2% of the gross revenue from the township residents that are subscribing to the paid television service. Township has recently become aware of federal legislation that supersedes the state legislation that we've been following for decades. In that legislation, federal, they say that PEG fee revenue can only be spent on cable-related items that are also capital-related items. So going forward, now that we know that, beginning with this next budget year, that 451,000 of PEG fee revenue, we have to track and make sure we only spend it on allowable capital cable-related items. So that's why this first year of doing that, it made sense to move that 350 to, I don't know, 400,000 auditorium project to that. And then that's how that'll get spent. But each year, we're going to have that same issue of making sure it either gets spent on something or it gets set aside and restricted just for that purpose. Library debt service. I usually don't discuss the debt service funds, but this one, I think, is worth it because this is the final year of paying that debt and it'll be fully matured. And while the budget year has one, one year left of principal and interest payments, the residents are actually paying this millage for the last time on this, this winter's tax bill. So as we collect those throughout this winter and through February, those dollars will then get spent down over the next budget year on the last payments of the debt. So that 33 cent millage goes away. Questions?
Before we go into this, is there any? Dirk said you did a nice job.
Thanks Dirk.
So if anyone wants, again, we have all of the directors or deputies here. Do you want to start with the question for Ruth?
Sure. For Ruth.
Ruth, do you mind coming up and talking about this? And this will be different than the companion cafe. It might be worth also talking about the companion cafe as well that you've kind of brought back over, or that's new, I think, actually.
That's new.
One is bringing back a service, one is an added service.
Greetings. I'm Ruth Ferkettich, Deputy Director, Senior Services. So we're, we have started this program called the Companion Cafe, which is offered months a month for the caregivers and their loved ones with dementia. And what we're doing is trying to build up customers, clients for the day program to restart that. And our plan is to restart it in not the magnitude that it was pre-COVID. So it would be either two or three days a week, partial days, not full days, looking at what the needs are of the people who, you know, want the service. So, so the Companion Cafe, we're carrying on monthly. We actually have a grant through Rotary Club for that. So that's offsetting the cost for that. The day program, Jose and Christine are pursuing a grant for that to offset the cost of restarting. to offset the costs of restarting this. We plan to utilize one of our full-time current coordinators to oversee that program. It would be part of that person's role. And then there would be backup administrators that are already on staff. And we would need to hire part, some part-time staff and we would use volunteers. Also, it's not going to be medically, it's going to be a social day program. It is not going to be medically based. So our goal is to provide a service to the members of the community who need it. We see on a daily basis changes in our clientele that come through the building. So we do see a need. Does that help you?
It does. And I'm pleased to hear that there's an effort being made to bring back even partial daycare. I mean, that was one of the most important and popular programs that Senior Services had over the years. And that's one of the programs I've heard from more residents about because there's so many people in need, the caregivers who need the opportunity for respite, for take care, whether it's just time to themselves or to run errands and they're unable to do that. And to be able to provide that service to our residents, I think is extremely important. So to get that started again is a start. I'd like to see it go way beyond that and hopefully, because there is a need. And there's no question there's a need in this community and certainly as a demographics, they're only getting older and it's the burden on the caregivers is only getting more intense. I mean, I, I hear from my own clients, I had a call today from a client, she was trying to take care of her husband and just in tears, having to, she couldn't do things for him. And the, not sure she should have go to a daycare or go to a nursing home. Just very difficult time for a lot of our residents. So I'm just glad to see you get it started. And like I said, I hope it moves beyond just the initial phase again.
It's really nice too, what they did to help bring it back with that Companion Cafe. I didn't have any, any family that had this. So I had to learn a lot about, it can be scary to drop them off for that person to a place they don't know. So the Companion Cafe gets them used to this center with their caregiver. And also the caregivers like that they finally have people to talk to and share with. But it gets them used to it so they can drop them off. Because a lot of the in-home now has become popular because of the, the less stress and anxiety on the, on the person that needs the care. So you and Christine came up with this idea of this hybrid to introduce them slowly and softly into the process so that they could be used to it and it's a safe place for them to be left there. So that is, so it's bringing back slowly because they've got this great hybrid idea of helping, like bring everybody back in that way, in a really humane, wonderful way. And that was you and Christine who came up with that. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
But yeah, hopefully we'll grow back to what it was. Yeah.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any more senior center related? While Ruth's up there, feel free to pepper.
I just want to echo Rusty Barnett. I, one of the line items specifically was what are we bringing back to the Senior Services? And I talked with Christine about this. So I think that type of program is needed. It was needed before. People need to have options for their loved ones. And again, the burden of assisted living centers and the financial cost for that is huge. So we invest in our seniors here and we want them to be able to age in their home safely and appropriately. This provides them that option. With you, I want to expand this program based on the need and the usage. So if we see that need and we see that usage, that is something that I'd be very much in support of expanding and finding ways to fund that. So please, based on that, let us know.
Okay, thank you.
Quickly, just want to shout out to the Rotary Club too, for their support. They do a lot in the community and it's just wonderful to hear that they're helping us too.
They do. And they volunteer.
I think it's, it's a wonderful program. As someone who's lost all of our parents, between my husband and I now, and have seen some of the struggles that they went through, whether it was trying to take care of the other one in the home, or even using, you know, full-time assisted living, that, that comfort level, that bringing them back with the caregiver to make that transition is, it's just so critical to the success for, for both sides. Just so that that person isn't just feeling like they're being deposited. And yet the caregiver, I saw my mom go through this a lot and it, you know, they need support, they need the break.
They do.
And how would, if this gets off the ground and it's regularly a program two or three days a week, how is that ultimately funded? Do the families contribute to that?
There is usually a co-pay that's factored into it.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the other questions, well, no, that's ARPA, we'll get to the ARPA after, was one quick one is opioid at the end. So just kind of to get you thinking about it by the time we come. But what other departments do you have more specific, especially feel free, Chris, feel free to go. I know what my first budget session was like, if anybody, I know some of you were here. I had posted notes, I had other notes. So don't feel bad asking as many questions as you want. They're here to help. So anybody have a specific department they want to bring up?
I guess, I'm sorry, back on the, before the senior center goes, and I've got my notes and I'm hoping I'm on the right page here, Jason probably knows. I noticed there was something called banking advisor fees of $20,000 for senior center. Can you explain what, what that is that we have that kind of a cost?
It's credit card fees for the people that pay for their services through a system they have set up.
Use of the senior center.
And so they're, yeah, they're eating those fees.
They use a different credit card company than the rest of the department. So there's a fee on every credit card when you're using it that the, that the businesses pay. So that's the credit card fee that they use based on theirs. Was it 2% or 3% for every transaction?
I don't know the percentage.
It's a small percentage of every transaction goes to the company that is taking the payments.
Okay. I didn't know if that was some other kind of like service that was advising them on some of their budgeting or anything. So it seems unfortunate, like a lot for credit card, but we have to do what we have to do.
Yeah, they like the convenience.
Wow, you're right. Thank you.
So like when you pay for gas, it costs you more than with cash.
You're right.
Because they're passing that fee out to you. Does anyone have, so are we good with seniors, senior center? Does anyone have any questions by any other departments? Chris?
Fire.
All right.
Sorry.
That's all right. It's near and dear to your heart. Here comes Chief Leroy.
So you didn't even try to ask me.
So Chief, two items on your budget that I wanted to go over. Medical services, we increased our budget specifically. We were spending, we budgeted, estimated amount was 12,000 and went up to 111,000. What's changing?
That medical services was the grant for the physicals that won't be in, for the firefighters grant, won't be spent in this fiscal year. So it was rolled over to next year.
And those physicals are ones we do for all of our employees to make sure that they are best practices, make sure our cancer screenings are up, especially for them being predisposed to all those cancers. Is that correct?
Correct. This is the NFPA equivalent, physicals plus the cancer screenings. And if we can, right now they're interviewing the companies to figure out who's going to do it. If we can save enough money, there'd be some additional testing that will be done through budget amendments with the FEMA.
Perfect. That's a great program to have. And then another one was we increased our training and conferences. Are we going to be able to do any other special trainings like the mass casualty, which we had such great learning from? We were able to expand that to not only PD and utilize other departments into it. It was a great thing for us to do. Is that what that additional money is for?
No, the addition, that additional money is planning on if we hire the three additional firefighters, they're going to need to pay for paramax school. And that money was to compensate for anticipation of that.
So it's just a placeholder based on what type of recruiting we can do?
Correct.
So if we can get somebody either with paramedic or EMT, how we're going to sponsor them through different programs. Perfect. I have no other questions. Thank you so much, John.
No problem.
Yeah, John helped change the, when you talk about recruiting for police and fire is extremely hard, as you, as you know. So one of the things that John helped change was we take on basics with the expectation of three years to pass through paramedic. And then we also help sponsor that.
No, and I, again, I think it's a good program. When we invest in our employees, invest in our people, they get buy-in to what we're doing. And then we also get to see different types of people. We get to tap into training recruitment of different people that other people are not able to do and give them at either younger age or even older ages, they're changing careers. So I think it's a great thing and I think it'll pay dividends for our program.
While John's up here, are there any other fire? Do you want to go over the BRICS? So there, some people may not know what the BRICS system is versus your alerts that you normally send.
Currently, BRICS is in two different parts. We use, it's a free service that's offered from a company that has a relationship with the Oakland County Clemis system. It allows us to have, get our incidents on our phones for all the station areas and alerts, which has been in turn. That's totally free that they give us, 100 users for no cost. And then recently, over the last 20 years or so, the IT department has managed our station alerting systems. And that system is failing. It's gotten to a point where it's, we're piecemealing it together just to keep it working. And the BRICS system add-on to the mapping that's already there. They have a station alerting component which will then alert all the stations when an incident comes in with different colored lights, lets them know if it's a medical or a fire, gives them some added technology that we've never had before with where incidents are. So as they're walking out the door, they'll see the address of the incident. So they're not standing waiting for it to come in. And it also provides the dispatch center with voice, text to voice from the computer system, which will allow the dispatchers to stay on the phone with people or patients that call. And while they're doing the EMD, they're typing in and that information can be sent out and the incident can be dispatched without interruption from, from the EMD that's being done. So it really improves efficiency in the dispatch center as well.
And then the other one to tap off with the conferences versus training and all of that, your SIM mannequins are something you asked for.
Yeah.
If you want to explain kind of what those are versus what you use now.
Currently, we just use props, training props with, offers no feedback. You know, you could start an IV, a CPR mannequin, it doesn't, the, the technology out there is an expanding field. These SIM mannequins are amazing with what they can do. You can basically input a type of run that you want to have. And from the IV to CPR to, there's all these sensors incorporated in these mannequins that allow for true, basically it's like hands-on, true dealing with a patient instead of actually having a patient. They're really amazing with what they've come up with in the last really five years.
Are they interactive where somebody could be there and changing things as they go? That was kind of interesting too, is normally you see these mannequins like Annie, I think was the name of the CPR, and they just sit there and it's really calm. And, and when we took the mass casualty, you know, having it more realistic, you really do help that anxiety and stress, getting them used to it. So you could, with the new ones, go ahead and throw in something else while they're in there. So it, it helps ramp up and get them used to what you're dealing with on a daily basis.
We've been very fortunate in recent years through our relationships with St. Joe's, they've allowed us to use their SIM lab. They have an entire lab at St. Joe's Pontiac. And they've brought us in for trainings and allowed us to use it. But what this would do is it will allow us to have a smaller, smaller version, a smaller scale version of that. But then we have it in-house and we can do all of our trainings with our, all of the new people, new medics, and really throw protocols and have them treat, treat simulated patients with the protocol and see how they react. And it really will pay dividends in the future.
Wow, that, that is fascinating. When you're doing some of your, your trainings or your drills in-house, not, not following you on the road or to St. Joe's, would you ever allow any of us to come in?
Absolutely.
Experience? I, I think it'd be fascinating.
Yeah, absolutely. Our training schedules are pretty much set for the year in advance. So anytime.
Oh, great. Thank you.
And like the mannequins, I think it's a great thing to bring those in-house. Because again, you're trying to do all these trainings in between calls. So again, you guys are going on over 6,000 calls a year. So trying to be able to put training in between there and make it good training. We started not concentrating on quantity of training, but quality of training. So providing these props that can ad hoc change the scenario on the fly to match the type of situations we do are great. So the fact that we can pay for these now and just make it that much better for our employees. Again, you're going on more calls and until recently, we've had less staffing. So again, we're going to be adding that staffing back, but it's still, you guys are still busy.
Yeah.
So it's great. And then the BRICS system, we use a BRICS system at my employer. It's been great because it provides basically GIS mapping right on the computer. So when the crews are going out, you have an idea of where you're going before you get to the mapbook, before you get to your phone. So it provides just one more piece of information so we can go faster. And again, speed matters. So again, our employees are great, but just adding those additional tools to make our department just that much better, those are great investments.
Anyone have any more fire related while he's up here? No? All right. Any other departments, people have questions on? If Jimmy, you want to highlight what the, the Trunarc is or what you needed, the drone, what we're going to be using that for. But again, using technology to help protect officers, especially with the Trunarc, and then using technology to help us solve crimes faster.
Yeah. The Trunarc is a, it's a drug analyzer really. It's a approved drug tester where the officers on the scene, on the road is, I guess if we take a step back, prior to the opioid problems and the fentanyl problems, we used to just, you'd literally on the side of the road, open somebody's baggie of suspected cocaine or, or, you know, heroin and you'd literally test it right there on the side of the road in front of the camera with little drug testers, not, not personally. And so that, we could do that then, what with the fentanyl and when these powders, other powders became available and they're all ingested and inhaled, it became something we did not, and we stopped doing. We don't allow those powders to be opened anywhere in the station. So a Trunarc, you can test right through the plastic of a baggie or of some, you know, whatever suspected drug it is. And it's very accurate at what it is. And so, and it is an approved drug, you know, pre, before it goes to the crime lab, you have a good suspicion of what it is. It still has to go to the crime lab for the official tests through the Oakland County. But it's just something to help protect our officers again. It's something we budgeted in the past that we've pushed forward just because of other priorities came up. But it's something that our officers have asked for. One, one equipment, and the good news for us is MSP carries them throughout the state. But for us, there's not many local agencies that have them. So in the event that Troy or somebody else were to have something where we could, or our Oakland County Narcotics Enforcement Team was on a run where they, they could call us and we could definitely, you know, assist in those matters. So, and the other one was the drone.
You're bringing a drone. I know the fire department uses one right now and it's helpful for their activities on scene to be able to kind of get that view of what they're coming up on.
And I believe this is kind of a mutually submitted project that went under the police. But we, we use the drone quite frequently now. And it's actually built into the partnership with the fire department in the county. And I know Supervisor Walsh was recently with Sheriff Bouchard at an event or meeting. And I think they said they're, they're up to close to 80, I think, drone pilots. They have a whole drone team. And so, and Farmington Hills has a fantastic drone team as well in Birmingham. And so each agency kind of has a drone, but it doesn't always mean there's a drone pilot on. And so with the help of the fire department and firefighter Swetala, he's, he's able to train us and teach us and license us. And so our drone is typically used for missing people. If there's a, you know, if our, if we have any of our officers that are drone pilots on a house fire, they'll automatically just go to the command vehicle and lift the drone and get aerial shots for the fire department while they're manning that. And vice versa. In the event we have an incident where we need all the manpower that we can from a law enforcement agency perspective, the fire department will bring it out and their pilots will run it for us at, from the command scene that we have. So it's really been great. We just used it last Wednesday-ish, Wednesday or Thursday last week, we had a, what we believe is a slip and fall off a roof, a construction death down in our south end. And that, we were able to put the drone up and then try to get visual of what actually occurred on the roof of that. So there's so many benefits to it, but we primarily use it. We do not use, this drones, just to be very clear as well, because I know there was an article in the downtown publications recently on it. Drones cannot be used as a government tool outside the scope of any type of search warrant that we would normally do. It still falls under the Fourth Amendment requirements. And the last thing law enforcement agencies want to do is abuse that power to make drones even more of a problem. So I know all the agencies involved are very strict in what they can use them for. And examples would be, and it was a learning moment for us, and I can't remember if it was Dirk, but we, we had issues with, with a property in the township. We say, hey, can we put the drone up and just get an aerial shot of? And the answer to that was absolutely not. The drone rules really come out of The drone rules really come out of Gleave, out of the west side of the state, were four ordinance type violations where there was some illegal storage in a backyard, I believe it was, and the township or city wanted, this is happening, and they put a drone up and that was definitely in violation of the Fourth Amendment. So those are things that we recognize, we know the rules on, and we do not abuse that. So, and then if I may, just touch on the opioid settlement money.
Yeah.
So we've sat through many conversations with the county on it and there's still a lot of unknowns on what we're allowed to use the money for. I believe Oakland County's, Oakland County created what they call a crisis response unit, which is actually full-time deputies that are assigned and they strictly respond, they will, it's a three or four-person team and now they've included OCHM, the Oakland County Health, on that as well, who's, who are co-responders are through. And that team specifically goes out to any jurisdiction that notifies them and tries to get people into immediate treatment. And I believe they're using some of the opioid money for that team. We just, we're at a breakfast recently and it's an amazing thing that they do. We have a couple of individuals in the township that we can frequently run on that are fentanyl users or opioid addicted and they do not cooperate. When I say they don't cooperate, they failed to get the help. They're cooperative when we get there, but we have repeated runs on these individuals. And so that team has numerous times gone out on our behalf with just a couple of recommendations from us and multiple times tried going in there, make contact, and they're relentless. And so in my opinion, that's going to be the future of kind of what the law enforcement perspective is, much like our Oakland County Narcotics Team or our surveillance teams, I really see this crisis response unit growing and including officers from other agencies and just another, and while, yeah, some agencies may, it's just another tool or necessity that we're seeing with all these opioid and it's actually scary with that. So one of the questions that came up from us and we're waiting to respond back is with our co-responder program, is whether or not our responding program would qualify under that as well to help fund or when we have that funding without the grants that we get when we have to start paying out of pocket for our two co-responders. So just some things to think about with that until we get that final yay or nay on that. But it's our opinion that it specifically states in that money that co-response is a model. And while ours aren't primarily fentanyl response, they still do provide services and recommendations for people who are addicted to opioids, so.
Did reach out and ask about that and was told that it might be a partial, although otherwise we'd have to turn her into only that, which of course, we don't want to lose out on the other services that Hillary provides, but there, I haven't gotten a full yes or no either, but there was at least an indication possibly partial.
Which, that would be fantastic.
Yeah, if we could prove like how often it comes up.
This co-responder model is being modeled now, county's hiring nine additional for other municipalities, so it's really growing.
Yeah, it's a great program. Does anyone have any questions regarding police?
Thank you.
And then Noah, I know, is Noah here? Oh, you're in the back. Noah, if you could come up, this is a question I get also a lot from residents too of, you know, a lot of questions on the, how would roads even be? So if we're giving that extra million that we're talking about doing, one thing that came up is, well, what about SADs? How does that deter? And you use that money on roads that are not even close to the SAD level of damage. Can you give us a little idea of how you pick roads, how you'd be using those funds and?
Yeah, so in addition to having the $750,000 restored that was cut in the 2019 timeframe, which funds concrete work, asphalt and like Cape Seal, which encompasses our pavement preservation program, right? We had the additional million dollars put into that program this year and we do have plenty of projects on deck. We basically, the red line forms where the budget amount is and we can do any project above that and any project below that gets rolled over to some future year. So bottom line is there's no shortage of work, but what we do as management is rely on the people that are out there in the field. So that takes the form of our foreman and crew leaders and even just field plowing personnel that are out there. Any given year, the freeze-thaw cycles can move roadway from a decent shape up to a horrible shape just by the freeze and thaw. So they have to be evaluated on an ongoing basis. Complaints play a role up to management as well, right? Preponderance of complaints, like we get hundreds of complaints on a certain area, clearly that's a perceived problem area, right? So that's a factor too. Future projects or other work we're doing in the area, right? SADs, we're not like the stuff they're going to be doing in the village next year, we're not putting good money after bad, but we can't leave major hazards in the roadway, right? So we kind of are filling potholes, but we're not doing overlays in those areas that are one to two years away from the village or ones that are really approved versus ones that aren't approved at this point. So we're cognizant of that. Again, coordinating with like engineering, if there's a big project in a given area, to stay out of an area until they're done and/or if we're going to hit an area hard, do the water main in there prior to some sort of big road work. Other, really kind of a dynamic process that goes into picking them and we keep that kind of second level as, we get always accused that we're picking and choosing losers and winners, right? And that's really not the case. That's why we kind of keep that field division from the administration staff so that we can really rely on what they're seeing out in the road. Clearly, the residents all believe their section of roadway is the worst because they don't see all 200 and some miles of roadways that we're over. So many factors, maybe five or six factors that go into play in picking something. A lot of these, we've been developing this list over the, you know, 15, 20-year history of the program. So again, we have a lot of stuff on deck that either kind of moves up the list or down depending on the funding factor. And certainly, the, we would need about 200 years to get through the roadways at our normal funding levels. So it's a situation where we're never going to get ahead of it, but it was a situation where we lost the Band-Aids and the things that we could do to extend the life of the roadways, we were not doing those things from 19 till now. So you'll see, and kind of to your point, when roads are so far gone that they get to the SAD level, pavement preservation really won't work in those applications. When you get to a situation where the roadway is broken up into pieces like that, you can't do Cape Seal, which is basically trying to keep the water from getting in there, right? It just won't work on those, just like putting an overlay over stuff that's basically broken up into gravel, you can't do that. That needs full reconstruction replacement. Plus, you know, you can't make up for sins when they were creating the road, like a poor base or poor drainage, putting a top coating on top can't fix that. So there's certain things that only can be remedied by the complete reconstruction of a roadway, but we're looking to put the tools in place to extend where it makes sense the value and the livelihood of the roadway, so.
I do appreciate that you keep it separate where it's the people who understand roads, whether it's engineers, the road workers, everybody who knows the difference is not political, so we don't get involved in which roads get picked. And I think that goes a long way.
Yeah, it's literally, it changes every April due to, you know, how the spring treats the roads and the just, I mean, construction in a neighborhood, we'll avoid that, you know, and kind of come in after and/or hold, have the building department work with them to hold the builder accountable. So it's just more tools in the toolbox and having Dwayne and our foreman out there and crew leaders, they're the ones who are really in the trenches that know, you know, can give us the situational reports back, so.
And thank you for quickly turning around that third event. So when we were looking at, okay, we do have a surplus, what are the things that we had before? And you've mentioned it too, like bringing back adult day services and such, what else has been cut? And there were two items left. One was the third waste day that was cut in 2019 and then another was a program even further back that I know Trustee Vakia has talked about too. It used to be called Clean Sweep. And it's something that I know other residents have reached out to Chris and to some of us of bringing that back. And I don't know if you want to do a quick synopsis on what that is?
Yeah, you know, I think we would benefit by some good momentum there. Typically, in the three years that I looked at, there were about 20 groups that did community projects throughout the township. Now, a group could be one person or it could be 10 people, like Foxcroft, they always had a big, you know, they have park, community parks, things like that. So that drives a little bit of participation and a little bit of activity. So, you know, 20 groups encompass maybe 100 people or less. We provided them with the debris bags, the, which is compost debris and then also trash. Then there's some special pickups that take place afterwards. We kind of built that into the contract with the solid waste under other events, knowing that might come back. And it's really, there's like six tons of debris, it's not a big, they can basically incorporate it into their normal pickups. So it's not a huge cost as far as the debris that's generated, so.
I have a question about, so that third event is going to be scheduled for spring of 2025?
Correct.
Correct. And then is part of that going to be Clean Sweep or just another?
No, Clean Sweep is separate. It takes place around Earth Day, so there's that synergy with that. We can't do a collection event. We kind of got to wait till May to do the collection event because you kind of want to capture that spring cleaning type mode that people get in, you know?
So what is going to be the main focus of the third event?
It'll be, so traditionally, we had two household hazardous waste event, a fall and a spring. Then we had the medical and e-waste, or e-waste and medical slash shredding. So we would get back up to that. So the medical, the Clean Sweep and one household hazardous waste would take place in the spring, then one household hazardous waste in the fall to round out those four kind of events.
Yeah, Clean Sweep was a great event. Our subdivision took advantage of that and, you know, all the promotional pieces you gave us, it inspired our residents to get going and it was just a great thing to get out, meet your neighbors and clean.
Yeah, we're literally sitting on a pallet of compost bags that we didn't throw away because we knew it might come back or we'd use them. And the same thing with the orange, like heavy-duty bags that you see along the side of the roadway too. So kind of had a feeling this was coming back.
Yeah, those are like the adaptive road bags.
Yep, yep.
And Clerk Brook has adopted a road in the area, so you know all about this Clean Sweep.
I have Val's example.
He's new, I've been doing it for about 10 years. Yeah, we own a mile of Inxter Road. We walked it all the time and we found we were getting annoyed with seeing people dumping coffee cups and things when we'd walk the same strip all the time. And we started picking it up and I noticed on another road that it said that this family adopted this one and the Boy Scouts adopted this one. And so I nosed around.
Well, at least you don't need a machete on Inxter Road like you do on Echo, so.
There's a guy with that cup back there and I have to go, you know?
Right. I can envision it in my head, so.
There's not a cup too far. I go get those, but.
We have, there's a thing that my husband made, it's like a stick with a nail on the end so that you can kind of reach in and get, the worst ones are the people that, sorry, that bag their dog poop and then throw it and you think it's a wet Kroger bag and you...
There was literally a dog poop bag sitting on our sidewalk right here. So I don't understand, buddy.
I bet you're going to bag it.
God bless them if they want to pick it up, you know? One litter versus another litter.
We've been doing it about 10 years and it's funny, it's actually, we feel like it's gotten a little bit better some recently because we'll be out there just like down in the ditch and trying to get this stuff out and people will see us and kind of look at us weird and they'll say, oh, what are you doing or what are you doing? You know, we've got the vests on and trash bags. Or they'll say, thank you for doing that. And I think some of the, you know...
They're the offenders.
I don't know.
They're like, that's where I'll throw it next time.
There's a correlation between those little green bags and waterways next to safety paths. It's not a logical connection, but it's a connection that people make. So when they just choose to pick it up but toss it into the river. So I don't understand. They're cutting out the middleman, which is the rain, I guess, so.
Does anyone have any other DPW questions?
No, I just wanted to reiterate, I'm glad we brought that back. I literally was at trustee office hours and a resident came up and we met with Carrie and Jose going through some of the programs and it, he was literally talking about Earth Day and how do we do this? So it's awesome that we're able to bring this event back. We have residents who are actively trying to do this, so the fact that we could bring this back and just kind of start that pendulum, just kind of cleaning up and beautifying our community, which again, it already is beautiful, let's continue to just have positive momentum. So I'm glad we were able to do this. Thank you.
Yeah, it's minimal effort for, you know, it's not a big waste generator. It would be great if it was, right? Because then that's more participation, but it's certainly something that gets, these 22 groups definitely get fired up on it, you know? So, and it's a good minimal effort on our end to get it done as far as managing it or, you know, kind of massaging it through and for good play, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll just say, I've been getting some complaints about litter, so we'll just say, you know, here's our opportunity to work as a community and educate people, you know, not to, not to litter.
Right, certainly.
Thanks, Noah.
All right, thank you.
All right. So the other issues to talk about would be ARPA. So we do have, as Jason pointed out, we're up to 1.7 since we moved some into peg fees and moved the rest. Just to reiterate, some of the ones that we are holding on to, but in case there's others too that people want to talk about, the parking lot at Senior Center is a big swing pendulum that we have to deal with and it has to do with the stormwater. So the parking lot will need to be replaced and what the HRC, right now it's about $50,000 for the study. They're trying to find out, is it enough of a change that you are no longer compliant with what you have and you have to go with the new stormwater, which is 100-year? We are currently built on that 10-year water storm or 10-year storm and the new is 100. So it could be a few hundred thousand if it's 10-year, it could be over a million is the estimate if it's 100-year. So they are trying to figure out exactly what we're dealing with so we know how much to budget. So that one's one of our, we're not quite sure where to go with there. Another is the document storage. Right now Clerk Brook is finishing up with the group of figuring out how things will be scanned and the other would be how much money it would take to scan everything. I think you had bids anywhere from 300 to 800,000.
Yeah, for the scanning alone. And then there's the document management system itself, but, you know, we will go out to bid on that probably near the late fall.
Right. And then the third one was the drainage, you know, we have HRC looking into it. One concern that keeps coming up is, is it something that could even be fully addressed based on HRC's current speed of availability, based on their staffing? Will we be able to even come to something that we could obligate it, which I'm starting to not believe it could be obligated by the end of this year? But it's something we still want to go forward to that we might have to just budget for in the future as opposed to ARPA. Another suggestion that's come up recently is the downstairs PBO area. There has been some requests for kind of refreshing that area, making it a little bit easier and more inviting for those that are coming in. The layout, the, I know both up here and downstairs, I know Clerk Brook's asked too for something better with the notifications. They're kind of like those, you remember when you were in grade school and you had the bulletin board and it was always little things posted up? That's what they are right now. So being able to update those through technology easier. So that's one that has come up and might be discussed, but also in coming to, you see that there's some left. We have, I'll probably got some ideas. If you do have additional ideas you want us to look into, that we don't want to just wait for these and then if we don't have them, we don't have backup plans. So again, since it has to be obligated by the end of this year, we're looking for additional suggestions in case some of these don't hit prior to the date. And if you don't have any right now, if you have some, I'd love to hear them. If not, feel free to start reaching out with some of those ideas.
I don't have one, but I'm just curious, Clerk Brook, for the document management system, are you finding it's a one-time fee or something that would be like a subscription base?
It would be an ongoing expense, yes.
So I don't know how suitable ARPA.
Well, the one, that would be a little different. Our expectation that I thought was, is that we were going to have someone do all of it to catch us up, but then it's on us to follow the plan of, as in, like in my department and the departments I run, the expectation is now you know how to scan it in properly or save it properly, just do it correctly going forward. I don't think we're ever going to get to the point where we need to pay another 800,000 to catch up.
No, so the scanning is one thing. So we have legacy documents that need to be digitized so that they are accessible in a searchable format. Then there's also, then there's the software that houses the past information and houses the current information and all future information. And that part would be a, you know, more of a software subscription type.
That would end up going more into computer services, things like we have normal, but not that big nugget of, you know, somebody's time and effort of scanning everything in.
It's just a very labor-intensive process and a lot of them are large, odd-shaped documents that are, have lifetime type of retention requirements.
Yeah. So once we don't have the legacy ones, as we're saving documents, we'll save them appropriately going forward in the clerk software area.
Right.
Yeah. That's the plan, at least.
And I would just add, as far as stormwater, I also think that's not going to end up being an ARPA type of a fund. I think it's something that we're going to have to look into budgeting into the future and I think that's going to be more of a problem.
Yeah. It's a bigger problem than we think and I think it's a slower fix than we thought, you know?
I agree and I think we've discussed that previously, that it's going to become a budgeted issue and I agree with that. a budgeted issue, and I agree with that. As far as any new projects, I would just say that maybe we come back and revisit it the next month or two because I'd like to get more data on the the cost of the senior center parking lot and the document storage to factor that into anything else that we may or may not do.
And I don't know, when is HRC supposed to, is Angie here? When is HRC, do you want to come up and we can't even come to you with the number till they finish that? When are they estimating that they'll be completed with the analysis?
For the?
For the senior center.
So I actually have no idea that was even a project that we were looking into. I don't know if.
In her defense, Cory's daughter is up for an award right now and he kind of threw Angie, our deputy, in here, but his daughter was up for an award, so he wouldn't normally be here. So you are getting thrown on the spot. I apologize.
So so what's the question again? I'm sorry.
So we have, we reached out to HRC. They have, it's about $50,000, I think, for the study. We need to know, basically, is it the 10 year or the 100 year storm, which greatly affects how we're going to have to pay for that or the amount that we have to pay and what has to be done to the parking lot?
So it will be the 100 year storm. So the problem is, we were looking at, if you make a substantial change to the parking lot, which it needs resurfacing and some base work, which is a is deemed a substantial change, then you need to comply with the current stormwater standards for that parking lot. There is underwater, there's underground detainment in that parking lot, think very expensive, and that will have to meet the new standard. So it became a situation where we couldn't just quick and dirty resurface the parking lot and do some small base repairs. Now we're going to have to install additional stormwater containment under that parking lot, which will end up being a much bigger cost than the actual parking lot surface itself. I believe it was a 90 day wait period for them to have kind of the construction recommendations back. Then they would have to kind of create specs depending on what they find, and then we would know a cost.
90 days from when?
From like April 1st would be when their basically study could be done. Then they would have, we would have to enter into another contract for them to write specs to, because like if they, they'll suggest alternatives to detain the stormwater, right? We could do an open pond. We know we can't do that because we don't have the site, but it'll be underground storage and detainment of some degree, right? And that will drive the cost wildly. So that'll give us a cost estimate. Then we'll be able to make a decision on the end of that cost estimate, right? If we can fit it into any given budget year, we'll know what that amount looks like. Or if we have to kind of focus on future years, we'll know that at that time.
How long will it take them from if it's possibly up to 90 days, it takes us into July? Will they be able to get it to us in time to obligate this for this?
Probably not. Probably not. You know, I will ask that question, but being conservative and gut feeling, probably not just based on how busy they are with all the rest of our stuff.
If we could get an answer on that, that that is a million dollar nugget that we're holding on to. If we don't need to hold on to it, I'd love to know.
I got you. All right.
Move on to the next one. Yeah. Yeah, we're still going to have to do it. We just need to know if it's ARPA or if it's something else.
You know, if they can fast track the bid and recommendation portion to get it in under this fiscal year.
Yeah.
And that would be prior to like October or something of that nature. I mean, that's construction season anyway.
Even if we could get it approved by November so that we have it obligated to you by then.
Okay, all right. I know what I'm after.
Yeah, that would help a lot. Then we know again if we're chasing something that's doable.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
All right.
Does anyone have any engineering questions?
I have some other questions.
Yeah.
Jason, do we have any dollars in here for the pension above the ADC?
No.
Okay, so the money that's currently in the budget for pension is just the ADC?
Correct.
Okay. I now have some questions for Assessor Crofts. Come on down.
Thought I was going to be able to get out of here.
They're easy, don't worry. So can you walk us through how we are able to see a taxable value increase of 6.5%?
Yeah, well, the last.
Prop A rule says it's 5%.
Right, but then there's any sort of new construction.
Okay, so I just wanted to get that on the record here, so.
Yeah. So anything above the CPI, which is for last year was a 5% and this year is new construction.
Okay, so the new construction that we got pushes us to 6.5% for the increase. Do you have an inkling or a gut feeling as to what it'll be in '26?
I don't think we're going to see a 5% CPI. I think we're going to be in the probably three to three and a half range, something a little bit more closer to what we're used to.
Right. And ultimately, the long term goal for inflation is 2%. And so we could expect at some point, we're going to get back down to that 1% to 2% range.
Yeah, I think I think starting next year, you're going to be in that three to three and a half. But with that comes the rollbacks and so forth, so.
Right, so our our actual increase in taxes collected will not be 6.5, it'll be less than three.
Yeah, Jason, in the past, what's it been? I mean, we've calculated like a 6% increase, but with rollbacks, it drops it down to like three and a half or maybe even four.
Yeah.
It's a chunk. I mean, it's a percent.
And that's coming back to Jason's point earlier about Michigan having very, you know, restrictive is a good word or pro taxpayer, anti municipality rules that says that not only can the taxable values go up by no more than 5%, also there has to be rollbacks if the net, if the net collection goes up by a certain amount.
Correct, yeah. Because the CPI is over the 5%, we haven't had that the last.
So the 6.5% that we're seeing this year is not likely to be repeated anytime soon.
No, no, I think this is the last year. I mean, if I had a crystal ball, I could tell you for sure, but I'm pretty certain starting next year, we'll be kind of back to where we've been in the past.
Okay, for sure. Now I have a question for Jason, but I don't know if anybody else has anything for Darren before we.
Anyone have any assessing?
Okay.
Thanks.
So Jason, the contract, the union contracts are 2.75% for fiscal '25. What are they for '26?
For all groups except fire, because fire will expire 3/31/25. It's another 2.75%.
2.75%. Okay, so I guess three, so it's close. And so I just want to pacify for a moment that we're going to see an increase in our employee costs of roughly 3%, 2.75% plus healthcare could push it to 3%, which should be about a million dollar increase from what we're paying this year. And the taxes will go up by maybe, Darren says 3%, right? So if you go with 3%, that would be 1.5 million, right? And then according to the capital plan, we're supposed to have seven million in '26 if we spend everything that's on the capital plan, which is double what we're going to spend in '25, so the year we're approving or not approving now, but discussing it. So capital's going up by 3 million, employee costs are going up by 1 million, and property taxes are only going up by a million and a half. So I just wanted to distill that down here so that everyone realizes that the ability, the good times that we're having in the last couple of years of being able to budget, sure, you want this? Okay, you can have that. That's not going to happen starting next year. And we're going to start to see, we're going to have to start being much more careful about what we, not that we're not careful what we're spending, I don't want to imply that, of course, but it's going to be more critical because our revenues are just not going to increase enough to cover our costs. And so that's why, you know, I know Jason feels strongly and I echo his sentiment about putting money into the capital replacement fund, because every dollar that we put in that today will be a dollar that we can take out next year to cover that $7 million of capital that we're not going to be able to afford otherwise.
That's why Jason and I created that to protect us. One of the first things I saw when I got my first budget supervisor was there's a huge nugget coming, and that's why, Jason, help create that.
So anyway, just wanted to bring that out to everyone's attention, so.
And it's not going to go down, it's just going to keep going up. I think it's cheaper, unfortunately. Does anyone have any questions along the way that you took notes on?